Take a three-minute break. It is 9:57, a three-minute break before starting council time, and that will make it at 10 o'clock.
Go ahead and start the recording. There you go. All right, so I'm looking at the council time agenda. I'm going to fill in as vice chair and acting chair right now. Agenda items only, public comments. Do we have anyone in the room who's come for public comment? Raise your hand, have you signed? Okay.
I'm here today to oppose the Lengler property, AKA Ackerman LLC designation, FRDU property, and further implementation of the FRDU. This designation is premature in that there are no development standards, only recommendations from the FRDU advisory panel. There's no need to rush on this. The only reason I see what we would want to rush on this is to the benefit of the property owners from substantial windfall benefit from the new property designation. Furthermore, there's been no consideration given, that I'm aware of, or very little consideration, to the 2021 Greater Brush Prairie Neighborhood Association RAB advisory panel recommendations, which I have here and like to enter into the record. I know it's in record, but I'd like to enter with myself as well. I would challenge the entire council to say they have read this recommendation, have considered everything within it. I haven't seen, really seen anything to suggest that that's the case. There's two large issues with the FRDU that I'll touch on for the moment. The lack of financial viability is one of the issues. The current structure of the lease only allows, or allows for approximately $158,000 in income on 10,000 cars per year coming down the railroad. And that equates about 28 cars a day. That's very little income for a project of that nature. Also, if the implementation of bringing the rock down in aggregate from North County were implemented at the tune of 26,000 cars per year, that's only $130,000 a year in incomes based on $5 per carload. These fees may or may not cover the entire cost of the inspections that the county is required to by the lease. Also, without going to a lot of detail, the railroad advisory board identified approximately 10 items of safety issues with FRDU, especially in neighborhood associations. Most of this is from, has to do with one-way in and out neighborhoods in the area. I also will say the FRDU implementation serves no benefit to the greater population only to, or the Clark County itself, and the extreme expense only benefits the railroad operator and property owners. The railroad was slated to be abandoned in 1984 and has largely been derelict for 30 years, so I'd recommend the Clark County get out of the railroad business and not further implement the FRDU.
Okay, thank you for your comment, sir.
And if we can, sir, if you could please state your name for the record.
Jeffrey Cox.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Thank you. Glenn Kincaid. On this land division, winery, or not division, but the winery issue, I just was made aware of some of this last night, so I had to dash down here. But R20 is not enough. You need to move into the R80 category, or somewhere near that, because a lot of the land got captured, that's smaller than 80 into R80 areas, and then they're, you know, these are the best properties because they're surrounded by state land. They're not going to be neighbors to complain for any events and various things. So my father, in '76, bought 60 acres. He did one acre off the day he purchased it, and then had 59. So he could divide one-acre lots in 1976 out of a 60-acre. But nobody wanted to spend the money to survey and do any kind of divisions like that out there at the time, but what would that be worth today? And he got moved into R80 when that happened. I bought 40 in an R80, seven or eight years ago, and we are prime time for this event center area. Some of these ideas and thoughts came from me originally, because there's nowhere out here in the East Clark County area, in the Washougal area, that's running a legitimate event center, because they don't have a winery. So there's events happening without the status anyway. So I just think that R80 ought to get added into your efforts at this point. And I will join that group that you're looking for if accepted, if, you know, we can go into an R80 area. Otherwise, I'm going to be trapped out by R20 status. Thank you.
Next comment, please.
And just a reminder, for those who are commenting, it's on council time agenda items, just as a kind reminder.
Yeah, I was exercising my discretion, knowing how far this person had driven to come today. And it was refreshing not to hear about the UN World Dominion plan that we have. Please come forward.
You have ten minutes.
If there are procedures in place about speaking at work sessions and things, and then some people are given...
Is it green?
I was going to suggest you not have the mic so close to your mouth, but if you could speak up, but otherwise it, we kind of just hear popping sound. But I, is your mic on now?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Teresa Hardy, that's H-A-R-D-Y. I'm also here about the freight rail dependent use. Many times when we're listening and talking about development, and we hear this from developers, unintended consequences is a question that often arises. And I think that in this particular case, we really need to think about and address what are the unintended consequences? And one of those things is quality of life. Since this railroad has been non-operative, somehow people have been allowed to build homes very close to the tracks. And I'm going to make reference to a couple that are close to the tracks. I'm going to start with the Country Manor Mobile Home Park, that is at northeast Caples Road. If you go out and visit that, there are about 159 spaces. The very end manufactured homes are within 20 feet, literally 20 feet of the tracks. And if you talk to the people in that, in that community, many of them are seniors, they're underprivileged, and they are on fixed incomes, and they have no idea what's coming down the pike. They know that railroad has been a long, railroad has been a long-time conversation, but they don't know where we are. So we have public engagement, but more than that, we have public awareness. And people that are along these tracks, they don't know. So how we can move forward with little public awareness is a major concern. Okay, then I'll go to schools. We have the Lauren Middle School and the Glenwood Heights Elementary School. And at the edge of the sports field are the tracks. I taught elementary school. That is extremely unsafe to have an elementary school so close to the tracks. If you, if there's the traffic noise, the vibration, there are portables out there. Portables have, the portables don't have the same sound quality as regular buildings. So placing, allowing a track to run by an elementary and a middle school is a very safe, unsafe decision. Then if you go out to northeast 99th and northeast 119th, there are new homes. And on one side closest to the track, some of those homes look like they're over a million-dollar homes. You can't tell me we're not going to get any litigation from these people that own a lot of money and that built, and now may not know, but this railroad may come into place. And I'm going to address one other thing. If we're really looking at job opportunity in the county, maybe we should follow some of the CREEDC guidelines in looking at construction, health, manufacturing, technology, tourism, and how are we levering what kinds of jobs we want in the county? And are we going to freight rail, and what are we getting from it? And what are the unintended consequences and quality of life?
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
And Counselor Medviji. Counselor Medviji, I'd just like to say...
Oh, we have the chair back in place. Welcome back. We have a few more people to speak in the room.
That's wonderful, and I would like to say thank you to you for seamlessly stepping in. That's much appreciated.
I'm handing you the gavel.
I got it. Go ahead, speaker.
Wendy Cleveland, for the record. So more rhetorical questions. Who does this FDRU, Slatchu Prairie Railroad, benefit? Is it the operator? Why would it benefit them? Spur lines, fees on the spur lines? Does it benefit the taxpaying citizens who will like, in all likelihood, be paying for the upgrades to the line? Does it benefit you guys on the council personally? Asking. Who stands to gain here? It's not the environment, it's not jobs, because, you know, as we saw with the calamity methanol plant, they actually brought, brought most, they were going to bring most of their workers in from China, so it wasn't, it was just the union workers that were going to build the facility that would have jobs. So what's the real agenda? I mean, I don't believe it's economic because the numbers don't add up. So you guys, I mean, you're hired by the taxpayers, you're paid by the taxpayers, and you're here to represent the interests of the taxpayers. But you guys know what our interests are. You know what is right. So I'm here today asking that you do that. Parking, two ideas. Simply increase the parking meter out in the garage. Let it be four hours. Let us pay for all four hours. And the other idea on parking is, since there's a counselor in my district that rarely shows up to meetings in person, or at all, let us use her spot, at least if it's open when we're here. Just designate that spot, and we can use it when we're speaking from her district. And finally, I have a minute left. If I may, I'd like to take this chance to address a regular caller to these meetings because it does affect Clark County. Kimberly, please, do us a favor. We want you to join our cause, wherever you are. We fight very real corruption in this county, but it's not the New World Order. It's not the Red Cross, or unicorns, or mermaids, because those don't exist. I actually wish they did, but they don't. So the land use and environmental corruption, this problem with the FDRU, those are all real things, and they're ongoing. Join us in that. Give up on the world order and calling in about that every week. Just wanted to throw that out there. You're welcome for my time.
Next speaker.
I don't think there's anybody else in the hearing room. No, we have one more, sorry.
Hi, Kim Hamlik, H-A-M-L-I-K. And today I am speaking about the railroad. Now, I've been sitting through these meetings, I've been listening to a lot of people, been reading a lot of Facebook posts, and I'm sure you all have too. There's so many questions I have, but we have a very, very old railroad. And I am so for jobs in our community, because we do need those for people to live here. But I ask myself, why? Why are we being so driven to push this through, this agenda of a railroad? It affects a lot of people. And if you read and you talk to people, I mean, truly, everybody, and I've been on both sides, you will see what they want. Please do what they ask, because that is your job.
Chair, that is all in the hearing room, but we do have some callers. Jackie Lane.
Also about the FRDU. This will have a huge impact on residences that the county has permitted very close to the tracks. So what mitigation actions will the county take? There are a lot of railroad crossings that will need to be mitigated for safety. How is that to be paid for? How will the county mitigate impacts of traffic and safety at all of these crossings? What will the public participation plan be? The residents in the area of the railroad do not seem to feel that their concerns have been taken into consideration at all. Why is there no longer a neighborhood representation on the railroad advisory board anymore? I heard the meeting where the RAB looked at the applicants, and they, one of them snarked, "We already know what they think," in deciding not to accept that application, which I find highly offensive. What assurances do we have that the industry will benefit the county? And what costs that benefit analysis has been done? 25 million in state grants have already been acquired, funded by taxpayers to improve the rail, and that will not be sufficient to fully and safely utilize the railroad and to provide needed infrastructure for commercial and industrial development and mitigate the impacts to adjoining railroads. Thank you very much.
And the next caller, I'm going to unmute you.
This is Kimberly Goheen Elba, and life citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. Mr. Medviji, please use your discretion for me, and don't piss me off by cutting me off with no chance to respeak as per rule. So I spoke addressing the new jobs in the railroad this last few meetings back, and what I suggested was if they take care of their already-employed railroad workers. They're very disgruntled, nobody knows about it. The council says they put out to public, but they do not. The, I mean, there should be more people in there for all meetings. So not to be mean or disrespectful, but I think we should build a low-income housing and put the railroad near Council Marshall's home, and she will then know how Clark County citizens feel about this long-lasting 30-year growth in Clark County, Washington, USA. All of the beautiful country settings spoken of have now been overpopulated. You claim to be a business of sorts, and making money is your goal at the expense of the Clark County residents. You will pick and choose who stepped, who stays and who is out. An example is this council, as far as I can understand, has cut off water rights to the well-established family farm of BZ, spelled B-I-Z-I. The owner uses his hard-earned monies to fight Clark County, or to fight you guys in Olympia. Give the water rights back to this farm. You are now associated with Vancouver City and its council. And I will say to the citizens of Clark County, Washington, that this council is aware of the fact that Vancouver City Council is a 15-year member of the ICLI, which is International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. They are following the treasonous Joe Biden's agenda, have a one-world order. Sorry to have to say that again, but that is what is happening. They're taking down America, free state nation. And that is exactly what is happening, and this council is aware of this. And they mold their policies, all and all in foundational constitutional means of governing the people is no...
No, I didn't. I don't know what happened, sorry.
Look, I'm going to speak on old minutes. I'm asking citizens to get more involved in our local government. We vote for the council members, and then they hire unelected people like city managers and the Clark County manager Kathleen Otto. They are unelected, and they are socialist Marxists. That is the undermining thing that they're doing to 400 cities in America.
Nobody else?
There's no other caller for this morning.
Okay, old business. Is there a move, a motion for approval of the minutes of August 9?
So moved.
Second?
I second that.
Any discussion? Edits, changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Who's opposed? Pass this unanimously. Council assignments, item 2.2.
Kathleen? Yes, thank you, Chair. So this is a follow-up discussion from last week and also from a couple weeks ago when we had a jail update, and just trying to solidify council representation on the opioid funding that we're receiving due to the lawsuit that Vanessa provided an update last week. And she said it could be, you know, there's two board seats that could be two counselors, one council, one community member, or both community members or staff. So it's what, I just wanted to make sure that we're capturing who the council would like to see on that group, as well as the jail stakeholder group, that's another one, that there's two seats. I know Amber did talk about maybe having one counselor and maybe a member of the finance team as part of that seat. We can also do finance team just as an advisory group. And then we also included all of your current assignments in the event that if a council wants to move forward on one of these two committees and it conflicts with one of your other boards, or have too many, if there's dialogue, if you want to adjust anything for those two boards.
Counsel, do you see anything that you wish to talk about today?
Chair, I have a question. I noticed when I was reviewing this a few days ago that the safety sales tax committee is not on here. Is that now here, Kathleen? Has it been added?
It's probably not because it was just added, and this was the one that, this group that you're looking at right now is what you decided on in January, so it is not included on this list. But you are correct, there is a public safety sales tax.
Okay, and that's, and the jail is, the jail is separate from that?
Yes, the public safety sales tax is holistic looking at that funding, and then the jail is regarding the remodel and anything comes out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch, Counselor. I'm the omission.
Madam Chair, I would, I would like to voice that our efforts on the opioid crisis and the fentanyl, I didn't, have we, we have a separate committee on the jail remodel now? I didn't realize we had...
Yeah, there will be. It was based on Dave Shook and Amber presented, I think it was at the very end of their presentation. Amber talked about all the stakeholder groups, and that this would actually be the steering committee member that would help vote on what programs and everything that will be included in the jail.
Okay, so I am volunteering to be that second person. I'll worry about any potential lack of bandwidth in the future of the opioid, fentanyl crisis task force.
And Counselor Medviji, would you clarify for me? Is it the jail task force or the opioid group that you wish to be most more involved in?
I think she's asking, are you talking about adding it to the opioid as a stakeholder, not the jail task force? Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I wasn't volunteering for the jail task force. I have a voice in law, justice, and other committees already, so someone else can pick that up.
Regarding the opioid issue, is that correct?
Yes, so Counselor Medviji would like to be on the opioid task force or the board.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. What would the scope of issues related to the jail, is it just remodeling or...
It's remodeling and programs, because programs will kind of guide the remodel also. So I know when Amber, they have, I don't know, 10 to 15 stakeholder groups with different expertise and lens. So all of that information coming in will go up to the steering committee, and then the steering committee will actually vote to determine the path forward.
I would be, I would step up for that one unless someone else wanted it.
So the interesting point about that question, though, is, so public safety sales tax, we're looking at some of those same issues. You know, our nonprofit and even small business ARPA grant funds, community grants. I mean, we leverage some of those funds in providing funds for programming related to the jail. I mean, I'm hoping that there's good synergy and some linkage between all these committees that are emergent. So don't misconstrue that. I didn't volunteer for that committee. I think I heard Sue Marshall volunteered for that.
We have just the one volunteer for the jail at this point.
Counselor Marshall, yes.
Is there anyone else who would have an interest in that assignment?
Is there two counselors for that position, Chair?
There can be, yes.
I'll, I'll step up for that, too.
Wonderful. So Counselor Marshall and Counselor Belkod, thank you both. Kathleen, does that answer the questions at hand?
So yes, the jail, I think we got that secure, and what all that Amber knows, we'll just use the finance team as a parallel process to also provide that input, because she didn't know if we wanted to have one of them as a voting member. I think it's better as an advisory group, so you'll get the full perspective. So the second one is the opioid, so we do have Counselor Medviji. The second person can be another counselor, a staff member, a community member, whatever council's desire is.
I had volunteered for that, I think, last week when we had discussed that, so I would be willing to be that second person on there.
Thank you, Counselor Young. And are there others that you have heard, other counselors, that you have heard who had volunteers or people who wish to join that? The only one that I had heard was from the public, the advisory board for, affectionately call it FAC, for the ongoing communication from the community on medical issues. So the, there is a kind of a natural bridge to the medical community and the, and the natural processes for getting someone outside of the typical appointee to serve. So if there was an interest in that, and someone had indicated to me that they would be willing to serve, then that would be a possibility. Are there any others?
And Chair, are you talking about the opioid seat?
Yes.
Okay. So the question that you're posing...
We have so many committees right now, it's hard to follow. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just want to clarify the question that you're posing to council is, is there a desire to have representation from the medical community or other community members who may have an interest in opioid and have that be one of the seats?
Yes, that's correct. And that had been a member of FAC who has an interest in opioids and has that interest from a perspective of needing to control it... and has that interest from a perspective of needing to control it in her own environment at the hospital. And so that was, that was one perspective. And she comes to it not as an elected official, but as an interested volunteer.
Okay, and just, I know Counselor, you can elaborate about this. I believe when Vanessa presented as well, there will be a seat for public health. So Dr. Melnick or somebody on his staff will also be on that committee. But certainly counsel's desire on one of the two seats being a member of FAC or another group.
Will the member of Dr. Melnick's group be staff per se? Or might it be from FAC as well?
If I remember correctly, I thought it was staff, but I can clarify that.
That would be, that would be great because then both could be included. And I think that would be a, a good intent achieved there.
Chair, I have a, I have a question. I understood we had two, possibly three positions that Dr. Melnick, Counselor Young and Counselor Medviji would be on the opioid settlement committee. Are we talking about additional people to that?
I think it's looking at, so there's two appointees from the counsel. That could be two counselors or a counselor and a staff member. So there's two positions that counsel's role directs. So she's talking about those two positions.
Because I think we have two counselors who've indicated an interest in serving.
Madam Chair, if you're talking about like community services plans, what the membership is, I think that's for a different day discussion. This is just for counselor participation on our committees. I think we've got it nailed.
Well, I, I thought that it was for a counselor appointee and that the appointee could be, has seen, has seen fit by counsel. If I'm wrong, that's fine. We could have it be obviously another counselor.
You, you are correct Chair. It's two positions that the counsel appoints and who is appointed is up to the counsel.
Is, I just feel the need to explore the other people that might have an interest that haven't voiced it yet. Is there anyone on staff who would have a, an interest in this? Perhaps even a professional interest in the topic where they would like to contribute?
Not that I'm aware of. I am confirming with Vanessa, she's not available at the moment, but confirming with her, because I do know that public health will have a seat. And so I'm just going to confirm if that's Dr. Melnick, one of his staff or somebody from FAC. But other than that, I've, I personally have not had any discussions with staff about these two appointments.
Okay, well, it seems like we're making good headway though on getting some diversity represented. So since Counselor Young, you had an interest in this area as well. Would you? I, I'm not sure if, I don't think you need to be nominated and voted on. Can we just give three thumbs up for Glenn? I'm seeing three thumbs.
Okay, thank you.
Finish now with that topic area for today. And then we'll come back to it when we have more nominees from other venues.
Okay, so you don't want to solidify the two counselors today for the opioid?
I thought we just did. We, we gave a thumbs up for Counselor Young. And is not Counselor Medviji already a member?
Yes, so, so yes, that is correct. And then just to confirm, we have Counselor Belkot Marshall for the jail. What I can share with Vanessa as well, as, as the group starts to form and meet, if the group finds that there is a need for other types of representation, the two counselors who are on that committee can bring that back to counsel for that discussion at that time.
Perfect. And there will be others outside of counsel who would be interested once they know of the opportunity. Because people really care about this topic, obviously. So I believe that we have completed what we needed to for today on this topic area. We've got our counselors for the jail and for the opioid group. And so now we are ready to move on. Is that correct? Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Freight rail dependent uses, this is kind of a follow-up, that's why it's old business, to a discussion just recently on the same topic. I don't know if Jose, are you going to introduce it or who is set to introduce this topic?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Counselors, for the record, Oliver Ojaka, Community Planning. Counselors, I will introduce this and then turn it over to Jose Alvarez, our Land Use Program Manager. Counselors, what we are going to be discussing today is really responding back to the three issues or three areas that the counsel asked us to come back to you with. At our last work session with counsel, you asked that we address three issues. One, to expand on option four, which was the option that the previous counsel asked staff to take through hearing, which never really happened or occurred. So what you're seeing today that Jose will go over is our attempt to expand on that option four. There is nothing that we are presenting today, even though we are going to call them options, that is new or a deviation from that option four that the previous counsel asked us to move forward with, but we never went to a hearing with. The second item that the counsel asked us to provide you information, if I may say so, is how the two schools in battleground, Lauren and Glenwood, received sewer, if you will. And then the third one was the PA's review of the bill and provide you their own assessment of what the bill says relative to sewer allowance or not. So those are the three areas that we will be discussing today. And hopefully get direction from counsel on how you would like to move forward. As you all recognize, staff have made a significant effort to implement this bill, to implement it in two phases. Phase one was to amend our policy in our land use chapter and also in our transportation chapter and identify where the overlay will occur. And then in phase two, to move forward with the development regulation to implement those policies. As the council will recognize, we did the phase one, the policies, and then the overlay map adoption. And that process was very successful. You hear me say often that it was not challenged. And it is in phase two that we have been having some challenges. And you hear me also say that we don't have any roadmap, so we are learning as we go through. The only two counties, Okanagan and County, Clark County, Okanagan, I've reached out to them. I couldn't learn anything that they have done relative to this bill. But with that, let me just stop there and turn it over to Jose. Both Jose and I, and I believe our legal counsel is online and we have Leslie here too, to help us answer questions that counsel may have. So with that, unless you have question for me, otherwise I will turn it over to Jose Alvarez. Thank you.
Good morning Counsel, as Oliver mentioned, Jose Alvarez. So the agenda, again, the implementation options that we'll be reviewing that were sort of an extension of the option four, which was the direction the counsel gave us back in the fall of 2018. The issues with the Lauren and Glenwood schools, which I provided a memo that included information from the sewer provider and the health district. So we'll go through some of that. And then the GMA provisions where we can talk about some of the issues regarding sewer. And then next step would just question and answers from counsel. Next slide. So the four options that were sort of extracted from the previous option four, just to proceed with implementation of development regulations that are without heavy industrial, using the adopted overlay map and no sewer. Second option, again, with the development regulations, this time the option of including heavy industrial. The TBD date is due to the whether or not there is going to be an issue with SEPA and if there's going to be any additional work that's needed related to the heavy industrial uses. Option three, again, with or without heavy industrial, no sewer and any changes the council wants to make to the adopted overlay map. Has a June 2025 date because any amendments to the comp plan. Since the council suspended the annual reviews and dockets last year, the next amendment of the comp plan would happen with the adoption of the comp plan update, which is due June 30th of 2020, 2025. And then option four would have the development regulations, with or without the heavy industrial, with the sewer allowance and any changes to the map. And again, the adoption for that would be June of 2025 for the same reasons as option three. Next slide. This is just a recap of what we discussed with the map that has the outline of the existing overlay in red. And this is an older map that shows the, the area in blue is actually part of the rural industrial land bank, which was removed as a result of the lawsuit. So again, this would be no, no changes to the adopted overlay map, no sewer amendments and proceeding with the development regulations. Those development regulations were, were the regulations that came out of the Freight Rail Dependent Use Advisory Committee. With the exception, the counsel in 2018 gave direction to remove the heavy industrial uses that, that advisory committee recommended. So there is a code section that has land use, that has the table of uses with the advisory committee recommendations and the staff recommendations side by side. So you can see the comparison and those are all highlighted. And those were provided to counsel back in March. Next slide. Option two, again, with the development regulations, no changes to the map, no sewer amendments. Because of the heavy industrial uses, we're recommending some additional public participation process. And then the note regarding the SEPA analysis that may be required. This is partly due to the determination of significance or non-significance that still has to be done. And based on the Chilachi Bluff lawsuit, it seems like it would be prudent to be cautious in that analysis. Again, the Title 40 amendments aren't subject to the once a year. So they're, they're not bound by that 2025 comp plan update. Next slide. Okay, again, option three. If we wanted to amend the adopted overlay map, that would be part of option three. That would be the big change in option three. And again, that would be a comp plan amendment and would be linked to the 2025 plan update because it exceeds the once a year review. And EIS might be required and we recommend outside consultant work since the county would be depending on the scope of the map changes, there may be additional outreach that would have to be done. Next slide. So option four, again, the development regulation changes, amending the, if we wanted to proceed with sewer, our understanding is that the regulation in 5517 didn't allow sewer. We amended our comp plan policies when we adopted the overlay map with language similar to what was in the legislation. So the belief is that that didn't go far enough to allow for the extension of sewer outside of urban areas. We would want to make an explicit exception to our policies to state that clearly that this is an exception. And so that would require a comprehensive plan amendment. If the council wanted to amend the overlay map, you could either do it or not. It would still have the same issue where it would require it to be part of the 2025 plan update. And again, the EIS may be required and we are, would seek outside consultant work. Next slide. So the Lauren and Glenwood schools, again, the Growth Management Act in general prohibits the extension of sewer outside of urban growth areas. In 2017, the Growth Management Act was amended and added a new statute that RCW 3678-213, which explicitly allows the extension of public facilities and utilities to serve schools cited in rural areas. The county updated their code through ordinance 2020-0202. And the provision allows the extension of sewer to Lauren and Glenwood schools. And it was acted upon by the battleground school district in conjunction with the wastewater district. Next slide. Again, the Growth Management Act prohibits the extension of sewer outside of urban growth areas. The 5517 amended four sections of the RCW. And the amendments did not clearly amend the parts of the GMA that prohibit the extension of urban services to or in rural areas. I believe you received the memo from the prosecuting attorney's office that you had requested. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Thank you, and go ahead please.
I was wondering what happened to option six that was recommended by the Freight Rail Advisory Group? Where is that? I didn't see that.
Counsel gave us direction at our last work session to come back with a refinement of option four.
But then you just went through one through four.
The refinement of option four is one through four. The refinement of option four is one through four. That's before you. That's the refinement of that one particular option.
Yeah, so you just answered by saying we're not seeing six, because we asked for four, but you just gave us one through four. So you excluded six.
No, councilors. My remark earlier was, you asked staff to expand on option four. What you're seeing this morning is our expansion of that four. We could have made it A, B, C, but it's not a new option.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Counselor Belkott, it's, are you, were you done? Because I would follow up on what you just asked.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Meveje.
So I would like to see option six, and what the difference is between option six and option four. The question did come up after that last session of what happened to option six. It went through a pretty lengthy public process. It had all the stakeholders in it. So can we, and I went back to the original briefing slides. And basically, option six, it was listed as committee recommendation with no further detail. Now, I know you briefed a little bit more detail. But so I'm asking that today. I'd like to revisit it. What is the difference between option six and option four that we're looking at today?
Sure. In general, the proposed code language that's in what I suggested was an option four, it has both the advisory committee recommendations and the staff recommendations. There are some changes in language, but that's all in that section of code. There's the inclusion of sewer and an expansion of the map. And I think the definition of adjacent is a mile.
And so Oliver, as he's looking for slides or consulting over there. So the tricky part about this, and we saw this with Knife River, you know, some of this, I'm not going to couch it as arbitrary and capricious, but when you have development regulations between zoning, the table of allowed uses, you know, there's very little difference between light industry, medium industry, rail development, rail industry, heavy industry. What really differentiates it is that table of uses within each of those categories. And that kind of became a problem or a central focus of issues with the Knife River Cement Recycling Plant. So, I mean, I don't know that we can get into more detail on that, but my question to you is, I mean, it depends on what we put into these table of uses into each category. The legislation itself excluded certain uses of the rail line, some of which was heavy. And so I guess the point I'm making is, I would just like to adopt the development regulations that the Freight Rail Advisory Group came up with, and really focus on what the table of uses is. You know, and I mentioned last time, you know, obviously, in a perfect world, we would like really clean industry that has really good wages. And I wish we could just pick who comes and wants to develop. But I think we need to move forward. I would like to get the development regulations approved. I would like to approve the Freight Rail Advisory Group's recommendations. I want the option of public facilities. You know, the reality that we've talked about before is on sewer, many businesses won't need it. So it should be an or there, whether you allow it or not. And on the other hand, if they do need sewer, it may not be feasible to ever have it, because it's not available. It's not nearby. There's no possible way of hooking it up. So, you know, I'd like to move forward, and if we're ready now to look at option six, is that what you were looking for? Thank you.
And as Jose may go through this, I will remind the council, but this is a new council. The previous council did not ask staff to move forward with this option. That is why we came to you last time and said that the only option the previous council advised staff to move forward with was option four. And you directed us to expand on the, come back and expand on that option four. So if you're going back now to option six, there are so many issues in option six that will be your direction now, new to staff. One of the things is here that it defines adjacent as one mile. So you know, we don't have any overlay map or anything that extends to one mile. That's one. Number two, this has heavy industrial uses on it. We were not advised at the time the previous council gave us direction to include heavy industries on the list. Secondly, this has a provision to allow for sewer. That, there was a discussion of is sewer allowed or not allowed? And that has been some of the issues that is still under consideration. So there are certain things on this list that the previous council didn't ask us to move forward on. But it's your decision if you ask us to. We were asked to come back and expand on option four, and what it will take to move that forward. And that's what we have done. As I indicated, those options one through four is not new. I could have labeled it differently, A, B, C. But it's within that option four that council directed us to expand on and come back and share with you what that means and how we can move forward with that. But if today you're directing us to do option six, that's going to be your call.
Yeah, thank you. So you just said that the issue with the one mile and that there's no overlay, you have no overlay map. What overlay map? If we wanted to say right now, we want to approve the existing overlay map, you know, previously I had said, hey, I want an overlay all the way out to the terminus of the rail line. You know, maybe that's step number two. But we have an overlay right now, don't we? Not that we could approve?
We don't need to approve it. It's already existing.
It's already existing. Okay.
It doesn't extend out. It just doesn't extend out a mile.
Right. It only goes to 500 feet, not a mile.
Yeah, that's the question.
Okay, okay. So that's the issue with option six is not going that additional mile. And I support not going the additional mile now. You know, the addition, the issue of adjacency, what's connected by a spur, and then does that intrude into a parcel that does go out to a mile? I don't know if that even exists, that there's a parcel that big. But anyway, okay, so I got that. Understand that. So I am interested in though, in not being restricted to what was briefed as option four the last time. I don't know if there's three votes to move forward. Basically, what I said, so the caveat to what I just asked would be perhaps to eliminate that one mile at this point. You know, that could be, we can fine tune what adjacency means, whether it's only 500 feet, and then the additional overlay that would go to the terminus of the rail line. So I'll be quiet for a while and let the other councilors, because I don't know what the others are thinking.
Counselors, if I may, we have the opportunity to open up the development regulations, so you can see side by side what is heavy that staff was recommending that it be conditional use permit. So we have that option, that we can pull that open so that you can see the differences.
Chair, I guess I'll go next. Thank you for putting together the information that we asked for. You know, I, having observed this over the years, I believe the previous council in 2018 was moving forward with what, and I think it was a struggle to figure out within the law and GMA and all of those things, how to make this work. And I think that the first steps that were taken related to the overlay were the best attempts to achieve, achieve something that potentially would not be challenged. And so within those 400 acres, you know, there were some concerns about nearby schools and mobile home parks and residential. Are, do any of those things exist within those 400 acres that are already designated?
I think, and Jose can correct me if I'm wrong, we made an attempt to avoid residential areas in identifying the current area that we had the overlay. A significant amount of due diligence was made to avoid areas that has already developed with residential development.
Thank you. That was my recollection as well. There was a good deal of due diligence in that part. You know, and looking at the expansions on the one option we requested information on, it seems to me if we wanted to move forward in the most expedient way, that would be option one, just to move forward with the existing freight rail dependent use overlay and develop those regulations around that. That would be really my preference. And in thinking about what it might mean to develop the recommendation that came from the Rail Advisory Committee, maybe with some adjustments, it seems to me that would be more or less like starting all over with the process. And I know the process took a good deal of time, staff, and I don't know if we had consultants at that time. But I worry about the impact all of that will have when we're already, I think, pretty well stretched in addressing the comp plan update. And that it will take a minimum of a couple of years to work through all of that. So could you comment related to what really, what that scope of work really would mean to look at the Rail Advisory Committee's recommendation?
So that option six would sort of fall in with that 2025. If you want to make any amendments to the map, it showed some amendments to the comp plan, both for sewer and for expansion of the map. And so those would trigger that wave or pause that work could occur. But the adoption would occur with the 2025 plan update.
And then I don't think anyone would be surprised if there was a challenge to that, and that would take, I don't know, some, maybe a few more years on top of that.
Yeah, I think there's no question. There's going to be a challenge no matter what. And we talked about hiring a consultant. Maybe a consultant hire would be a law firm that could get through this as to what can be put in place immediately, and what needs to be in the comp plan or the mention of SEPA. So maybe I would fine tune my request to amend this, to go back to option six without the one mile, and the existing overlay that's already in place, so we're not changing that, that we get on the fastest schedule that we can for public engagement. You know, the real focus, and then we have the option, we're feasible. So it's an or of public facilities, whether it's sewer or stormwater runoffs. Just, there's going to be places that won't be feasible. There are places where it is local and nearby and could be feasible. I think we can move a little bit more faster than staff is indicating. And obviously, we can't move fast at all, because this has been, we've been kind of a dead stop since 2017, since the governor signed the law. So anyway, I would throw that out to council. I don't, again, I don't know if there's three supporting it, but I would like to move forward as I just stated.
I have another question, Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor.
This was related to the comments on SEPA, recommendations from staff for additional SEPA analysis. My understanding is that this wouldn't be required for us to move forward, that sequel work would be required when the development regulations are adopted. So it wouldn't be a work stoppage, as what's indicated on the memo that I read. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Counselor, what I will say is that there is, if this, if the direction of council is that at the time of a formal application by the applicant, that that is the time that Clark County will require the applicant to conduct an EIS, we can write the development regulation as such. However, I would have preferred that, given the type of use list that we are talking about here, that it will be prudent and efficient to do, take that use list and run it through an environmental review. And then that will lessen the cost to the applicant coming in and then having to go do SEPA or do an EIS. It will be much, much more efficient having the county as the lead agency, because we are the one who are proposing the use list and identifying which ones that will be permitted outright, or which one would be through conditional use permit, if you will. Or if you make the heavy industrial list, not to go through a CUP and just also be permitted outright, that if that's the distinction that we are trying to make and have the county do that EIS work, because we know what uses we are proposing to be allowed. So that would be my recommendation, that that SEPA work be done upfront.
So that's a complete reversal from what we've heard from you in the past. So you're going to have a SEPA on a general overlay, without knowing what a specific project would be, just general categories of potential uses of property? I mean, up until we had what we considered an Aaron Growth Management Board opinion on the overlay for the surface mining. I mean, previously, I mean, I've been here five years. I know you've been here a lot longer. But the constant steady stream from both the lawyers and your office had been, you don't do an SEPA until you know what the project is, until the permit's requested. And now you're, what I just heard is you're And now you're, I, what I just heard is you're taking a 180-degree different opinion that we should do these generalized SEPA analysis ahead of time.
No, Counselor, I'm not changing my mind. There's a difference in non-project action, map amendment, and a use list, that we know what the use lists are. That's the distinction. Here we are saying and identifying the type of uses or industries that we are recommending. So that is known. That's the distinction. This will not apply to an overlay. Secondly, if we are going to look at expanding the overlay further to the entire 33-mile of the railroad, that's a different issue. We may not require SEPA because it's a non-project. Just putting a, an overlay on a map doesn't need you to a project. That's the distinction. Here you have a list of uses, a known fact of what type of industries that you're inviting to be out there. So that's the distinction. I'm not changing my mind as the SEPA responsible official.
Chair, if I can just add something. Council had a question, I believe, last week about the list of businesses from CREDC and if any of them or all of them require sewer or if there are ones that don't require sewer. So I did get a response last night from Jennifer Baker and the list of potential businesses that was provided to the Railroad Advisory Board and Dan Weaver, all of those businesses would require wastewater treatment facilities on some level. So there are no businesses or industries that would not require that. So I just wanted to make sure that I had that follow-up taken care of.
So I'm not clear on that answer. So they do require sewer?
Yes.
They couldn't have their own?
I don't think she, I think she looked at the industries and the businesses that she supplied and her says is that, and she sent me the list. At a quick glance, by industry, all of these projects would require wastewater treatment facilities on some level. And my question to her was, do they all require sewer? Are there some that don't require sewer so that we could consider that? And based on her response, all of them would require some sort of sewer.
About how many were on that list, Kathleen?
Yeah, I, I'm still not clear on that because, I mean, yeah, every business needs something.
I'm just following up on a question that council asked, which was, is there anything that could happen based on the information that CREDC sent to the Railroad Advisory Board? Can any one of those not require sewer? And that, so I'm answering that question based on council's questions last week. I would say on here, it's probably 20 to 25. Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. Thanks for that information. And, you know, it gets me back to thinking that this legislation, if, it's, it's, it's not written in a way to achieve what it desired and that it really needs to go back to the legislature to fix it if, if we want to move forward with this. Because clearly, at least from everything I read, extension of sewer is not, not allowed. It was allowed for schools. It clearly is allowed for schools. And perhaps there could be a way for it to be extended if there was a school near where there wanted to be some freight rail industrial use. But then that would seem like a conflict to me. So I think this is just, this is just basically flawed.
So, yeah, so I totally disagree with that. And, but to Kathleen's point, thanks for getting that answer and assuming that is 100% accurate. Then it just, by putting in the or language, sewer or septic, it then becomes self-selective. Okay, well, there's a business there and they need sewer and it's not available. It's self-selective. They won't be able to get a permit to build there. So we're not violating any law. We're not going outside the intent of the legislature. So I stick with my recommendation and thoughts.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. I've got a number of questions and comments here. The first one, you know, we keep hearing over and over about the impacts to the people that live near the rail. And what I'm wanting to know is, as the, the traffic increases on the rail, is there anything that triggers mitigation and who is responsible for that mitigation?
Counselor, this is Oliver. It's a, it's a difficult question. And this gets me to the issue of the use. So if it is a use that triggers multiple or number of rail car on the, on the, on the track, we might want to know that upfront so that the applicant could mitigate, whether it's noise or other issues. That would be, the burden would be on the applicant and the railroad operator to mitigate those impacts. That's why sometimes it's always necessary to look at the use list and determine, based on their impact or their significance of their use, to determine whether it should go through a conditional use permit process so that those issues will be identified and conditions of operation will be part of the conditions for approval.
Yes, so thank you for that.
Yeah, we have asked similar questions in the past and I have my colleagues at Ecology that have also asked me questions that I don't have an answer, which is if there is a spill, for example. But I know that the bill is written not to transport crude oil and other type of stuff. But in case of a spill, who will be responsible? I'm sure Ecology will step in and the railroad operator and, and whoever else will step in to deal with that. But that was my response to my colleagues when they asked me the question. But yes, it would depend on the nature of the use, the level of impact that could be created. If it's through a conditional use permit, our conditions of approval will be written in before that use is operational.
Okay, so I understand that. I mean, we have control over individual projects, but as the traffic increases and there's more noise, there's more safety concerns, I don't think we can require any mitigation of any form based on a particular project. So is there anything at this point in time that would trigger mitigation requirements? And, you know, who, who would be responsible for that?
Counselor, I would say that's likely hypothetical. The state has noise levels and other conditions that, you know, will be looked at. Let's take, for example, noise. There is a noise, including state level, that will be looked at. If noise is the issue, I don't know what other issue, but I cannot, you know, provide you hypothetical because I don't know.
Okay, so that, I guess, would be labeled a, a pretty large concern to me. Because there, I mean, like I said, we've consistently heard from the community that they are worried about their quality of life and also safety factors with the rail being so close to some of these residential developments. So I think we need to have that fleshed out and really dialed in to figure out how that mitigation's going to be, how, who, who's going to take care of it and how it's going to be monitored? You know, how are we ensuring that there is safety along the line as the number of cars continue to increase? And then if, if we, if we approved the over, or if we approved moving forward with the overlay as it is, and then we, because I kind of feel like in this instance, I know I've heard the term full speed ahead, but I feel like baby steps are warranted in this situation to kind of, you know, kind of take in what are the impacts, what are happening before we go more, any more aggressively. And so, for example, like if we were to leave the overlay as it is, not expand it, keep it at 500 feet, how long it would be the process if we evaluated and determined, guess what, we're not, you know, we're not bringing any jobs to the county with these particular parameters? How long would it take us to go through and make changes to that?
Well, so we have in the code provisions, sort of an opportunity to expand the overlay if property owners wanted to be added. And it would be part of our once-a-year amendment cycle. And I think there's criteria for the number of properties to be included, making up maybe a minimum of 200 acres. And so it would be part of our annual amendment cycle.
Okay, and if we determined that we wanted to expand, like all the way up the line, all the way up north?
It, it would be at council's direction if they wanted to revisit that. They could put that on our work program and we could lay out what it is that we need to do. And then, again, it would be part of the, probably our docket process where we would update the plan once a year.
Okay, so probably like a year would be a decent estimate?
It would be the, the part of our once-a-year amendment cycle. Whether it took a year or longer depends on what the scope is. If we were going to extend this the entire length of the railroad, depending on the width, we would want to do some outreach along the entirety of the railroad. There may be additional environmental work that's part of that. So it's really hard to say how much time it would take. I can just let you know what process it would be under.
Okay, and then we, you know, we, we're kind of having this back and forth on heavy industrial versus light industrial. But we also already have railroad industrial. And what I'm curious about is if we could, you know, to kind of add on to some of Counselor Medviji's comments, could we just only blanket allow industrial railroad, but make some adaptations, some, some amendments to it as it is? Because as we saw in the Knife River issue, I think that it's not ready for prime time. But could, I mean, is that a possibility that we just get rid of industrial and heavy industrial and just go rail industrial? And we have a big discussion and go through and really fine tune and determine what we want to be allowed along the railroad?
Yes, so that was the proposal that the Advisory Committee came up with. And then the amendments to sort of strip out some of those heavy industrial uses are essentially the column that staff came up with. And there's also a summary of the changes in the memo that was provided to council dated March 3rd.
Okay, and the other question, I, I was, and I think Counselor Medviji was kind of questioning as well, but the, the language that, that was read from the CRED still has me scratching my head because it, it sounded to me like the answer was more, yes, every, every parcel has to have the ability to dispose of its sewage. It didn't have the language in there that said it had to be a, you know, municipal sewer system. So I don't know if that can be clarified?
We might have to go back and ask. I know, I don't have a good information on that. That will have to come from an organization like CREDC or others that are in the industrial sector. But I don't have an answer for you, Counselor, but we might have to go back and ask them. Because what happens often is, as you know, when a firm is looking at a site, they're looking at acreage, depending on the acreage size that they need. They're looking at other issues like availability of power. How many minutes per gallon can you provide, including sewer? So those specifics, we staff don't have that.
Okay, and so I guess this is, I mean, this is a, a really difficult piece to work on because there are so many moving parts to this. And I'm looking at your options one through four, which are refined from the original option four. And I don't see one on there that quite fits exactly what I envision. The whole, there's two things that are unanswered for me that I feel like I need some more clarification before giving direction on. One is exactly what we just talked about with the CREDC because from what it sounds like may have been said, we could move forward, give this whole thing the green light and not have any industry come in because sewer is not allowed. So I would really like to have that clarified. And then the mitigation piece, I don't think we should move forward on this until we have, we understand the impacts to those residential neighborhoods that are so close to the line and we have a mitigation plan in, in process for that. I just, I just, I don't think it's right to move forward with that till then. I think this can be done. And I think it should start in baby steps. And if that goes well, then you can look at expanding and, and you learn from the initial process on what mitigation is going to be required as you open the door further to make sure that, that we're being good stewards of our citizens, of our land, of everything. But I, I think those, for, for me, those two things, I just, I gotta have clarification. I can't support moving forward without understanding the mitigation to the neighborhoods and without knowing this whole sewer thing. I, I feel like we probably ultimately will lose in the courts on the sewer. But I'm not necessarily opposed to the sewer if it's done correctly. I mean, if it's, if the line is sized only for that one individual property and development and cannot possibly be expanded without laying new pipe, I, I get that. And, you know, because some of this too is, if we don't bring sewer and we have, you know, an, an industry come in that has 200, 300 jobs or something like that, I'm sure that they can mitigate onsite that septic stuff. But do we really want that happening is one of the questions. Do we really want, you know, this big giant septic system on this property so that it can properly disperse and have all that going into our groundwater? To me, it makes sense to look at the potential for sewer, but, you know, being absolutely certain that it cannot expand beyond that one property. So those are some of my thoughts and I'm not quite sure how to move forward at this point.
Well, you can move forward by voting no and, and then the rest of us can, can make our own decision. One thing that wasn't discussed by staff in answer to your questions, Glenn, is between staff and the Freight Rail Advisory Group, they came up with pretty detailed buffering requirements, which gets to all the issues you just talked about, from safety to aesthetics to noise. There, you know, it's development. And so the development regulations take care of this. You know, maybe the heavy industrial use and based on one of your other questions, you know, rail dependent, you know, that table of uses, the rail industry table of uses has some pretty heavy industrial use. I mean, that was the argument with Knife. So it's really when you can synthesize everything. It, it, that was the point I was trying to make, from heavy to light. It's really the table of make from heavy to light, it's really the table of uses that's controlled and what's, what could be a conditional use. So by just sticking with, with rail industry, you're not getting, you're not eliminating heavy industry to some extent because of those table uses. Anyway, I, I think we need to hear from everyone, Madam Chair, and then let's get to a vote and some direction. And those councillors that aren't ready to move forward, they can vote no.
Chair, I have a few comments.
Go ahead, councillor.
Um, I know that councillor Medvedji just touched on it, but like I've mentioned it at several other rail meetings that we've had where we've discussed, the county has a website that's dedicated, you can look through all the meeting minutes. I know councillor Young mentioned baby steps, but seven years, that's, that's been a lot of long baby steps. I mean, they've had, you can go through and look at all those meeting minutes. Everybody from the Farm Bureau to the Brush Prairie Neighborhood Association gave their comments and their feedback. You know, you can, you can see all the comments. And as a result of all those meetings, that's where, when councillor Medvedji just talked about the environmental protections and the buffers that they came up with as a result of those meetings and that feedback. So you can go back and you can check that out. And that's all I have to say about that.
So I'm just curious though, what I was referring to is, is mitigation from the rail line itself, not from the development. I, I understand that we can mitigate that through development regulations, but the actual train cars going down the track has not been addressed yet.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, I'll try to shorten it. So my comments were, I, I understand that all of the development that's approved on the rail line can be mitigated properly with, with good development regulation, but the, the impact to the residences around the rail line itself, not specific to any project, when it's so close to the rail, the safety factors, the noise, the vibration, I still have not seen anything that is addressing that and how it will be mitigated.
Are you referring to if there were a very serious rail accident, how would it be handled?
Although that is a concern, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm actually.
Would you, what are you referring to?
Where the rail is so close to residential neighborhood. That is what I'm referring to. And I have not seen anything that addresses the safety concerns, the noise concerns and the vibration concerns that people experience.
You are aware there's homes and other uses next to railroads, immediately adjacent all over the United States of America. In fact, a lot of towns grew up because of the railroad. I mean, I personally have lived next to rail lines on several occasions. People buy homes next to rail lines. It happens. It's all over America, you know? I, I'm not sure, Glenn, what, what you want us to do in that regard.
It's in Fruit Valley, actually.
Chair, I have a couple of maybe clarifying things and a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you. Related to the freight rail dependent use advisory committee, I know it's come up several times and how diverse it was, but in fact, the neighborhood representative, I believe, only attended a couple of meetings. The Farm Bureau, and I think the parks representative voted against it, and it, it became very contentious towards the end. And I know there were seven members of the rail advisory board itself that were appointed to the committee and that the rail operator himself was a pretty influential presence in that committee, so that's, that's how that played out. But just to understand our status at this point, I'm a little confused if we, are we still considered out of compliance with the Growth Management Act at this point? Have we gotten the okay on things in that realm?
We are still, thank you, this is Oliver, we are still not in compliance as it relates to the Shiloh Ship law, so that's what makes us non-compliance. But I know that the PAs office is working hard to prepare for the, prepare to deal with the case at the Court of Appeals.
Thank you. So I guess my advice in moving forward, however we may move forward, and I expect I'm not going to be in the majority on this vote, but that we, we, we try to operate within the regulations and the Growth Management Act because otherwise it, it puts us at great jeopardy in losing funding even for the comp plan update, I think is one of the more immediate grants that we'll be up for. So I, I just feel that we need to be very cautious in that realm.
So I'll fill in the gap of the radio silence here. I, I would like to make a motion to immediately approve the development regulations as they exist. You know, we can always tweak them later. I want to move on the fastest possible schedule because this has been languishing for so many years. I want, it sounds like the existing overlay map is already approved, so I want to stick with that for right now. We can address further maps in the future, that could be tomorrow, but let's just stick with the existing overlay map. The development regulations and, and the table of uses, you know, heavy versus light, rail industry, you know, it's really the table of uses where the rubber meets the road, and maybe we need to tweak that a little bit. But I, I want to approve what, what the freight rail advisory group has already done through the public process over so many months in contentious public meetings. The other, only other change from that, basically the option six, is to revert from the, from the mile to the existing 500 feet. And we can address further expansion or not in the future or in specific locations. Allowing septic, public storm, sanitary sewer, just make it an or because it'll be self-selective. Some businesses may require it and be selected out and not be able to be built. Others may need it, and maybe it's feasible to connect them through, through the rail line right away. I don't know where those locations are and whether they exist, but obviously we are very limited feasibly as to where sewer will be allowed. So let's just give it an option. I, I don't know that we need to define the sepa work at this point, but it really should come at the point of a permit, once a specific permit is requested, a specific use within these broad categories of allowed uses and within the broad category of conditional uses. So anyway, I, I make that motion, we need to move forward, we need to.
Chair.
Off the fence.
Chair Barman, if I, if I may, this is Leslie Lopez, thank you councillor Medvedji. I did just want for the purpose of council time, I don't know that a motion to approve is necessarily.
To give direction.
Okay, so then it should, it should state that it would be a, you know, a motion to give direction, not a motion to approve, you know, regulations that would have to be done at a council in our public hearing.
I understand, so my, my point of scheduling at the, that would be to schedule the public hearings to actually do the approval, but, so thank you for that clarification.
Staff, I believe that councillor Medvedji in his motion was talking about option six. Would you please place option six up on our overview slides? There we go. So this is what you were proposing and what we would be voting on, as I understand it.
So with the exception of the mile, eliminate that, and with the exception of, you know, we, we already have an overlay map, let's stick with that. So if there, if option six is a different map, we'll take that off the table for right now.
Was the first one that you said, councillor, something else to take off the table, what was that? The, the one mile radius? And where do you say that on this listing?
It's the first bullet point under option six.
So that entire bullet would be removed?
Or just adjusted to read 500 feet, whatever was ultimately approved.
So would that now read, development regulations includes heavy industrial uses? And define adjacent up to 500 feet?
Yes, that's what councillor Medvedji said.
And I, and I just wanted to verify with him that that was his intent.
Just, just to clarify a bit, would, would it be to retain the existing map that was adopted? Is that what you intend?
That's what I heard.
And Chair Barman, this is Leslie Lopez, again, just a point of clarification, just to make sure that council understands that this would need to go to planning commission as well, once those were done. Thank you.
Good point, and I appreciate that. I just want to be real sure too that we are clear in what we are recommending for consideration. Let's go back to that first bullet. I recapsulated something that I thought perhaps you had meant, councillor Medvedji. Was that correct?
You can't do it now, so if you want to make it or, you have to amend it.
Would you like me to repeat that?
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what, what are your thoughts? I mean, I've already been speaking too much here.
Well.
What would you like to do?
A, move forward. Be, be consistent with the recommendations of the group that is appointed to advise us, which is exactly what I think we're doing by looking at option six. Option six, bullet one. I don't, I'm, I'm a little bit unclear as to why the parentheses is there includes heavy industrial uses, particularly if we define adjacent to be 500 feet, because that puts into close proximity heavy industrial uses with housing. And that does not seem like it is a plus. So. Think I would be more comfortable at this point with defining, or with stating development regulations defined adjacent up to 500 feet, period, you know, not including the heavy industrial uses. Or if we do include heavy industrial uses, which I don't see the point in that here at this point in the option, that then it would change the, the latter part of that so that it was back to one mile. But I don't see the point in including that here. So I guess my bottom line, as you indicated, would be to simply exclude heavy industrial uses. Then the rest of it, I see no problem with updating the public participation plan. There can always be excellent input that has come from the public participation plan that had not been considered to this point, so I support that. We support, I, or I support item three, bullet number three, because that is consistent with, again, what the, the strategic emphasis has been from the FRDU for allowing us to go forward to the maximum ability to attract business. And so I support that. Expand the January nine overlay map to reflect the committee's recommendation. I don't know the reference there as to what would be changed or not changed. If someone could explain that, then perhaps I would support that as well, but I don't know the reference there. Kathleen, do you? Or councillor Medvedji, do you?
Yeah, so I was making the motion to leave the overlay as it exists in place right now and making no change to an overlay, that could be phase two.
Gotcha. Do you know what the committee's recommendation was?
It was, it was the map presented to you last week, I believe, from the Railroad Advisory Board.
And what specifically was the, the change to the map?
Well, they began with a mile expansion and then they reduced that to properties that were larger and that weren't in close proximity to some of the environmental areas, but we can pull that up from last week if you'd like.
Ah, well, you know, I have no objection to those suggested changes, so I would support leaving that bullet in as we explore exactly what the intent of the, of the committee, of RRP was through the. of RRP was through the FRDU on this. So the bottom line is, looking back at, at Option Six, I think it's pretty much intact. If we could go back to that slide. If we want to recommend something be considered. I believe that we have it right here.
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Chris Cook is on. I'll, I'll let her speak. Someone could turn her up a little bit, please.
I'm sorry, does that work?
Chris can't hear your words you're saying.
Oh dear.
There we go.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Thank you. And I apologize. Just to be clear, expanding the overlay map and amending the comp plan to allow for sewer, those are both comprehensive plan amendments. And those could occur at the June 30th, 2025 periodic review and update. But they cannot, the comprehensive plan cannot be amended between now and that date.
Thank you. I appreciate that reminder because I recall your having said that and we just need to adhere to that.
Development regulations can be amended before then, but just not the plan.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Any other comments from the counselors? Before we think further of staff as, as we know that they are seeking for clarity?
Chair, you were breaking up at least on my audio. I am not quite sure what you just asked.
I'm sorry. Here, let me turn off my video. Maybe that will help. Are there any other comments from council that would define a change in what we would recommend to staff? Or what we would recommend as this goes forward?
Chair, this is Counselor Marshall. I guess I'm a little bit confused from what I've heard of what the chair is suggesting and what Counselor Medvedji is suggesting. They, they are not the same things in terms of the map overlay. And so I don't know that we, I think that needs to be clarified. And maybe there's just simply disagreement between the two of them.
No, I doubt it. The map overlay could not be changed for a number of weeks, as I understand what Chris Cook has suggested to us. So we would go forward as is right now, looking toward an eventual reflection of the committee's recommendations. Would that be your perspective as well, Counselor Medvedji?
Yes, please.
So I think that would-
Just so I understand, does that mean the existing map that was adopted by the previous council? Is that what we're talking about?
The map we have in place today.
The existing overlay map that was adopted in-
Great. That, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Chair, there was also some conversation that you'd mentioned about the mention of including heavy industrial uses. Could you perhaps clarify on that as well?
Yes, I, I felt that we should either leave heavy industrial uses with the adjacency defined as one mile, leave that as is, as stated here. Although if some felt that there was no need to include heavy industrial uses language in Option Six, that if that were removed, that then we take a look at how adjacency is defined. Because heavy industrial uses and 500 feet toward what could be residential property is really close. So that was my reference there. And if we, if we leave it as is, then no change would be needed.
So if I'll ask, I would like to ask Oliver and Jose that when it, on that bullet point where it says Development Regulation Includes Heavy Industrial Uses, that's just calling it out as an FYI, that the Development Regulations already includes it, just for transparency?
Right. The proposal from the Advisory Committee included Development Regulations that, and those were inclusive of the heavy industrial uses.
Yep. That's different from staff recommendation.
We could, so if we deleted that includes heavy industrial uses, would that, I, I mean, we're talking about kind of two different things here. We're talking about changing the recommendation from the Advisory Board, and then we're talking about changing the regulations. So would, would removing includes heavy, because I understand where the chair is coming from. You know, if, if we're only going 500 feet from the rail, that, and it allows heavy industrial uses, that means we are going to end up with heavy industrial uses right next to residential.
So whether you do 500 feet or a mile, that's still going to be the case where you could locate heavy industrial uses up adjacent to or abutting the rail line? It's just how far out you want to go is what the 500 or mile, is sort of the outer parameters. That's what that's trying to get to.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if it's, I mean, the, the issue is whether it's a small lot or, or a big lot, right? And if it's only 500 feet and it allows heavy industrial, that means that that industrial is going to be within 500 feet of residential guaranteed. Whereas if, if the lot is larger, we could, with the Development Regulations, we could require larger buffers from residential. Am I correct?
Certainly, the, the size of the parcel that's going to be included for potential development is going to affect that. But from all indications, it seems like the interest is in larger parcels to be able to serve and get whatever raw materials from the rail line to a potential user. So more than likely, you're not going to have a five acre parcel. It'd probably be 20 to 40 acres or combination of that.
So, Madam Chair, and Glenn, I, you know, there's been a lot of previous work done by staff on this, but this focuses on that point I was trying to make about the table of uses. Because your average layperson, me including, you know, you look at light industry, you look at rail industry, you look at heavy industry, and they're all the same thing, depending on what you place within those table of uses. That's what differentiates them. What differentiates from a, a direct allowed use versus a conditional use? I think that's where we could use some additional focus. And, and that may need some tweaking. And ultimately, then, once you get a permit, it's all about location, location, location. Will a particular requested business be appropriate in the site that they want to be in? It may fail SEPA analysis. It may not have the buffers for environmental reasons. They may not be able to buffer by the Development Regulations. I mean, that's where the devil is in the details. But so, I think it would be beneficial to the council to look at that, focus on those table of uses, what's allowed, what's conditional, and have that as a next focus area. But approving, in essence, Option Six in that regard.
Counselors, if I may, this is Oliver. If I might join in quickly. I think that the heavy industrial, and I can understand where Counselor Medvedji is coming from. The heavy industrial, a summary of that will include things like sawmill, wood preservation, chemicals, plastics, rubber products, cement and concrete product manufacturing, cement manufacturing, ready mixed concrete, lime and ginsick, other non-metallic mineral products and primary metals. Those are the categories that fall into the heavy industrial uses. I've been trying to see if we can get to the use table. Just open it up. Don't want to take a lot of your time. Jose, let's just open up that use list and we can also share that with council. But what I provided you is just a quick summary of the uses that fall within the heavy industrial category.
Option Three, we are not supporting, so perhaps we-
Let's go to, let's, let's go to Option One and open, there is a link to Option One that has a Development Regulations link. Let's just open that up. Have council take a look at it.
That would be a couple of slides earlier.
I'll go up first. So before you have the use table, essentially our industrial use list, the column to the right, FRDU, was the Advisory Committee Recommendations and the column SR, it was the staff recommendations based on the direction the council gave us. So the items that are highlighted in yellow were the changes that were made between the Advisory Committee Recommendations and staff. So a lot of the uses went from permitted to conditional use permits. And then Oliver summarized those uses that we thought may met the criteria for heavy industrial, and we proposed putting an X on those. And so we can scroll through that. And that's what this document reflects.
So some of the, some of the things that Oliver mentioned aren't even approved. They're, or some of the things I think that he mentioned, a few of those were prohibited?
Right. Right. So right now, the, as an example, the Freight Rail Independent Use Advisory Committee recommended having sawmills and wood preservation to be a permitted use outright. The staff's recommendation is to not allow that at all.
Thank you. What is the X instead of the C under staff?
So X means not permitted at all, and the C means a conditional use permit would be required.
And a P under the-
Is permitted.
Permit?
P means, P means permitted.
What does that mean? I'm sorry, Jose. Does that mean if it's permitted, and so then they can go ahead with it?
It's an allowed use. It still has to go through site plan review process. But it's an, it's an allowed use in that zone or overlay, in this case.
So it sounds like there are similarities with the conditional use permit?
Right. So the conditional use permit is allowed, but there may be additional conditions that might be placed on the development to help offset or mitigate the impacts that are beyond what could be required through a site plan review.
Thank you.
So is this something that we're going to be able to address later on down the road?
This has been sitting there since, when did you complete this? I mean, this is great work. A lot of detailed work. When, when was this done?
This was done in 2018.
Yeah.
But it was provided to you in March.
And this would all be subject to public engagement, public process, all, all of this as we go forward?
Correct.
Correct. And we've alluded to that earlier, that this have never, the public have not seen this, even though, yes, it was a recommendation. It hasn't gone through the public hearing process. It would require that for us to move forward.
So if we are recommending that you move forward with Option Six, this is the list that we're recommending, which is by the Advisory Board, not the staff's recommendation, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And so that's the detail you can get into as we enter into the public process if we move forward. It's just a matter, do you move forward with the staff recommendation or with the recommendation of the committee? But there's a lot of things you could probably agree with, maybe some things you would disagree with, and that would be part of the future public process.
Chair, you're muted.
This, this is a part of the total Option Six that we would be recommending for consideration.
Madam Chair, you have my thumbs up to move forward with what was the Option Six. So it's the, the category not in yellow, although I would tell staff right now, I agree with most of the yellow changes, but I'd like to open up the aperture and start from what the, the committee had done, the Advisory Group first, and then parse through this. And so we still have some work to do, but you did a lot of great work that evidently is new to some of the counselors.
That's two thumbs up. Is there a third? I am seeing-
Is Michelle still there? I haven't heard from anybody else.
I don't know if you can see my thumbs up, Chair, but I gave a thumbs up, so.
I didn't see your thumbs up, so we do have three. Thank you, Councilor Balcott, for saying so. So with that in mind, I think we have what we wish to have for the input to staff as they move forward, and for what we would bring through the process as it goes forward in ways that make it more publicly visible and so on.
Okay, what I would recommend for our next steps, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, one is we'll look at what that is, summarize like a proposed process for that to bring back to council to make sure we're on the same page, and also assess the work availability for our staff, because with their comp plan update, and I mentioned this before, and others, we may, we're probably going to have to hire somebody to help champion this through. So we'll come back with that summary.
Thank you, Kathleen, greatly appreciate it, yeah. We're going to need outside help.
And what again, just for clarification, will the outside help be doing?
I didn't understand you, Chair.
Just for clarification, what will the outside help be doing?
Helping leading this process through, everything from the public participation plan, whatever is entailed in this process to get us to a public hearing and implementation. Because with the comp plan update, that's taking 90% of Oliver and his staff's time, so they don't have the bandwidth in their department to ensure that this is given the dedication needed.
And that's looking out a couple of years. So this person is not like a two-month employee, but would be with us for a while, correct?
That's where we're going to go back and summarize and put together a potential plan moving forward, and that will identify how long we may need the assistance.
So taking into-
And we'll bring back to council. And we'll, yeah, we'll bring back to council.
Taking into account what Chris Cook reminded us about the timing of the comp plan changes that can be made.
Yes, will do.
So I think we have finished this to the extent that is possible today. And good job. Good job. Okay, let's turn to new business.
Thank you, Counselors.
Is there any new business?
No new business today.
Counselor reports. I wish to add one comment to what I said at the last counselor reports, and that was that I am growing weary of people who call in without a connection to the, to the work being done, and have a tendency to use unelected and then fill in the blank with adjectives that are not complimentary, and adjectives that are totally and completely unnecessary. But today, with that same individual's input, which was the same as it has been before, there was added that this unelected person is a socialist and worse. I think that is something that we need to keep a close eye on and simply stop. There is no reason for labeling our staff in negative ways such as that. If one says they're unelected, that's factual. But to say that they are socialists and on and on, that is beyond facts, and that is beyond the time that those comments should have been stopped. So I will personally be investigating what we can do to stop those kinds of comments. If we keep them factual, we're okay. Because the more factual we are in this body, obviously, the better. Whether we agree or disagree with other, with each other, there are ways to keep things on the up and up, and by that I mean factually based. So let's work on that, and I will pledge to do so as well. Any other counselor reports?
So I'll just segue off of that. I mean, the First Amendment's a tricky thing, and certainly it is a waste of all of our time. It is a waste to, of the constituents' time that have to put up with these random comments. They're attacked not only on each of us, but on staff, the city council of Vancouver, the President of the United States. I mean, what we've become in some contexts is just this uncontrolled social media platform. And yeah, there are ways to do it. I mean, I think Vancouver, I mean, they took what I consider a fairly drastic step, they just simply limited public comment to only a couple times a month. I mean, that's one thing to look at. I mean, I don't, the First Amendment's a tough thing, and the PA has been, you know, trying to keep us out of trouble by turning off comments that probably shouldn't be heard. But on the other hand, I mean, I don't know what to do, Madam Chair, it is something we need to do something about, and I would hate to have to limit public comments further because of these abuses. But it is an abuse of our, of our public commenting period, no question about it.
I agree, and I can understand why the city went to that formula. I would personally like to avoid that if possible, and find a better way to limit down, you know, the statements about our staff that charge that they're socialist and Marxist and on and on. That is just so incredibly tiresome.
Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick comment on that. I agree, you know, this is, it's a real struggle, it's a real challenge, but I don't know any way short of limiting public participation, and I can't, I can't support limiting public participation. If I have to deal with this kind of a situation, then I just have to deal with it. That's where, where I am at, I just-
And I have not suggested that, Counselor Young. In fact, I suggested the opposite, that other ways be found, not by limiting-
Yeah, I just don't know other ways, but hopefully there are.
I hope so too. We'll look, see if we can find them. Others surely somewhere have found things that they have found successful. Okay, work session requests.
There is one this morning from Public Works. The Clean Water Commission wants to present the 2022 annual report, as well as discuss ongoing 2023 work and provide an update to the planning for the Lacamas Symposium. They are looking for feedback on that, and the council to accept their 2022 annual report, and they're looking for 30 to 60 minutes.
Well, I certainly support it. And the three thumbs are up. In fact, one person has up to head up two, so I guess that's four thumbs.
Yes. We got it, thank you.
Hopefully you can see me.
Oh, that's right. Where are you? I don't see you on the screen at all.
I'm not sure why, because I can see myself. Kathleen, can you see me?
I can, yes.
Now I do. Ah, you know what? I have a scroller on the right side of my screen, and I moved it all the way down, and there you are.
Thanks, Chair.
Who knew? Okay, now we go to policy issues. Are there any?
I don't have a lot of updates, but I did want to, I know this morning you guys had a lot of discussion on the railroad, and thank you for that, because staff wasn't prepared to talk about option six. So I appreciate you guys and your patience getting through that discussion without them necessarily being fully prepared for that. So thank you for that. And if I can, and we didn't just have to be in the meeting, but I would like to amend the agenda in removing one of the executive sessions of 7.2, the RCW 4231101G for 10 minutes. So it would be removed from today's agenda.
A bit late for an agenda change, but I vote for that. I have no objections. Are there any objections? No objections, it's done. Thank you, Kathleen. And any other policy issues?
Not today.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, this meeting is adjourned, or not adjourned.
Chair, Chair Barman.
Yes?
This is Leslie Lopez. Actually, we still have the one potential litigation executive session before we adjourn.
Yes, I just changed my word adjourn.
Okay, sorry. I stepped in too quickly.
Yeah, you did. But you know what, I'm glad you did. What is the ideal word? Obviously not adjourn.
I would suggest using that we will be leaving this meeting to go to executive session, something to that effect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's not a word. There, but I hear you. There is a word for it. We should find that word, and then we can use it next time, and we'll be right in the know. But anyway, thank you. So, yes, we are going to leave the council time, go into that very brief 10-minute executive session for potential litigation, RCW 42.30, .110, paren one, paren little i. And then after that, we will come back into council time for adjournment. And with that, we'll move out and see you in a bit.
Chair, can we, we need to set a specific time that we're coming back?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
We would need to set a specific time that we come back to council time?
Yeah, 10 minutes is 12:47. It's 12:46, but give us a minute.
It'll be 12:37.
We're, we're back in session, and we have a forum, and we are now adjourned.